So was that, I think, three months from now. So it's settled.
You look at what they are. Can you look at what they are in the hall?
Well, it's not because I think some financials. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, there's, there's, so.
Now, you don't know when I see them.
I'm talking about the moment on all of these. I'm sorry, I don't make it. I don't remember. I think it's, uh, 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 we're about to, uh, the planning board on the, uh, James Lee Piarzo.
Jason, have you been having some work done out of the house?
I am, I am. I have permits.
I said permits, let me go.
I have, we're doing my first floor.
The first clue was the dumpster.
It's the third year dumpster.
Yeah.
Yeah, it started, I started a demo yesterday. That's why I spent my forty dollars there.
You're pretty hot in the house.
Yeah, you should be.
I stay a square way from the car. That's why, uh.
If only, if I only could.
This council meeting is called the Order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of July fifth, twenty twenty-three was included in the list of meetings published in the Curry News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting was also placed on the bulletin board of our hall and announced on the borough's website. A copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of the statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Dana Sullivan.
Here.
Council members, Rambo Brady.
Here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Vroom.
Here.
Fred Reed is excused this evening. Randy Pitts.
Please join me in the place. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
One set of minutes from June nineteenth, I'll take a motion.
So moves.
Got it, good.
Council members, Rambo Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
We have our department reports and notices and unlisted for this meeting, committee reports. We'll start to my left with Councilman Mitchell.
Okay, Mayor. First, the New Jersey Assembly and Senate have passed a law requiring the disclosure of flood risks, potential home buyers and renters, so new residents will not be caught by surprise like many were in, uh, by Ida. On Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, a representative of the Historic Historical Advisory Committee attended the four-hour-long Heritage Partner Workshop held at the East Jersey Old Town Village in Biscataway. Thank you, Marge. Thanks also to Councilman Brady for joining Paul Saltus of the Wallace House in presenting the Revolution NJ Proclamation last Sunday. Thanks to this proclamation, Somerville is now listed as a revolutionary community by the New Jersey Historical Commission and Prophets of the American Revolution. That's all I have.
Mr. Brogan.
Nothing great, but that's what we see here.
After break.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As you may know, I am liaison to OEM and Jason, our director, is here tonight. You know, the water main break on Friday really couldn't have come at a worse time. Imagine not having water just as the holiday weekend started, and what could have been a calamity really turned out to be an annoyance thanks to a coordinated efforts of our community. Special thanks to New Jersey American Water who kept us informed all the time about the status of their work and the need to boil the water and what have you, and to all our departments for acting as efficiently as possible on a holiday weekend. Jason, as always with OEM, kept everything under control, and I'm really confident that the systems we have in place would still work well for us in a more serious. It was sort of a dry run, and I was kind of happy that it happened, although I wasn't happy at the moment, but if we looked at how Somerville reacted to, because you cannot be proactive in this kind of thing, the water's out, but if we had a situation where there was a major problem in this town, a real calamity, I do believe that our systems would work the same way, and I'm enormously proud of Somerville for doing that. We are certainly a leader in this area. I'm also pleased to report that FEMA sent us a check for two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-four dollars to cover reimbursement for picking up trash in the wake of Ida. Thanks to Kevin for diligently following through with FEMA, which he has spent many days and hours doing so, and for having him continue to work with FEMA to request additional payments. Tonight, we're going to introduce an amended lease agreement with FD Stone Order for the emergency services facility. This is being done as a result of increased construction costs, and normally we could make this a change order, but that would have resulted in a higher interest rate for the borough. So this is an amended lease agreement that will be introduced tonight, and for my colleagues on the council, if you do it carefully, let us know if you have any questions, and we anticipate it would be put out for public comment and adoption on August seventh, which will be our first meeting in August. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Good, thanks all.
The Environmental Commission remains busy throughout the summer. They're having a hot look supper on July fifteenth over at the Community Garden, so if anyone would like to attend, feel free. They're also coordinating next week, July eleventh, a volunteer project, the rain gardens, with volunteers who are available. We have a student from a high school who's also seeking volunteer work, and we're working on a tree project with him, and there are fruit trees to be planted this fall, so their work is continuing. We've also been selected by the Arbor Day Tree Foundation to receive, to have another work day for MetLife and receive more fruit trees and planting services of them. So, so they're busy, they're well-connected, and do a great work for our community.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Just a couple of updates on rec. Michael F. Pool on Clark Adder is open daily from twelve to six. The pool is for residents only, and registration is free. Grand registration is required. Forms are not accepted at the pool. The Spade Parks are open. John Long Park on Mercer operates daily from eleven to six p.m., and Michael F. from ten a.m. to six p.m. Lastly, registration is open for fall soccer league. Players entering from grades one through eight, you can register. The deadline is July thirty-first. For more information, see our borough website, please. Thank you. Just want to, thinking back on what Councilman Brady said about the water emergency, I can't thank the following individuals of the departments enough. Mr. Sluka, of course, for coordinating things through, through his office, Jason Kraskin at OEM, Chief Workman at the Fire Department, Chief Manning at the Police Department, Rodney Hadley in the Public Works Department, and special thanks to all the residents of Somerville. If you looked in on a neighbor, even though it was only short duration, you know, we have seniors that, you know, I'm sure you checked on your neighbors. Somerville shines every day, but I think we shine even more brightly when there's a need. So if you did something small and unknown and unnoticed, believe it may, it's noticed. So I want to thank everybody for that. I think it just points out the importance of infrastructure. And I've said before, and I know former mayors and council people would agree, infrastructure's hidden, it's invisible, it's quiet, until it doesn't work. And this was a case of, how many times a day do you turn on a faucet? Ten, twenty, thirty? All of a sudden, the infrastructure's failed. I think it just points out the importance of the efforts that we and the utility companies are doing. I know there's a lot of disruption, a lot of traffic cones out now, but a water main is one thing, a gas main is something even, I think, more deadly. So I know that there's a lot of work going on. It is inconvenient, disruptive to some extent, confusing, frustrating, but we've got an older community, and we're working hard to upgrade it so that it works for now and then also into the future. So if anybody from the borough in an official capacity, or if you're out there watching as a private citizen, just, just thank you. We did ourselves proud, and your collective efforts have been noticed, and we're ready for the next one. On a lighter note, talking about sewers, you should have gotten in the mail the past week your last sewer bill from the borough of Somerville. That sewer bill will be, will be due on or before August tenth, when you pay your quarterly taxes. The next sewer bill, which will be coming out in the fall for payment in November, will be sent out under the auspices of New Jersey American Water. If you have an outstanding balance due, we're encouraging you to square that up before, before October. You don't want to have to put, you know, a tax lien out on your property because you missed one sewer payment, and yet we, we have to do that to cover the cost to the borough for people that are in arrears on their sewer. So that last payment to the borough is due August first with a ten-day grace period. After that, your bills, I believe, will come with your water bill on a monthly basis, and you can start looking for those combined bills probably after October first. And that's all I have. We have one discussion item tonight, New Year, SNSA, Verizon, return visit from previous meeting.
Evening. Head per cell, encumbered, pressing, showing your video if you're trying to have the wireless. I'm just going to keep this very brief. There were some revisions to the plans as discussed with the council on Friday of hearing on June nineteenth. I'm just going to go over those very quickly. You should have copies of the plans submitted to, so this will be for the full extent that I can speak on easily. In respect to the site that was on Davenport Street, both of them have addresses at Davenport, one's on, one is on Orchard, and one is actually on Davenport. The site has been moved to the north, closer to Edenham, as requested by the council, so it's in that open space area closer to Edenham. So that's represented in the plans, and it's attached to the resolution as proposed for your approval. With respect to the per-site payment per year, we did discuss that last time, so that's something which, under the Jersey law, is not required. Under federal law, there's a maximum reasonable fee of two-hundred-and-seventy dollars per site per year. Verizon will, on its own accord, provide that amount per site per year, two-hundred-and-seventy dollars, and that's also represented in the proposed resolution for you tonight. So those are basically, nutshell, two changes based on our prior discussion. I thank the council for that. If there are any other questions, I have our engineer here that can go over the physical aspects of what's being proposed.
I'll start to my far left. Councilman Mitchell, any questions?
Yeah, first of all, I want to say thank you very much for relocating the proposed pole on Davenport Street. As for the pole on Orchard Street, we were under the impression that you could not use existing poles because they had high voltage power at the top of the pole. We went out and looked at the poles since then, and apparently, one of the poles has nothing, no service on it at all.
I believe that the high power that was on Davenport, on the, I guess, eastern side of Davenport is what that is, that's what we have on the western side. With respect to Orchard, perhaps Mr. Slack, can you discuss that?
The Orchard Street pole was, um, difficult. The empty pole on Orchard Street, I believe, is on private property at the school, not in the right way. The pole is a new pole in the right way of Orchard Street.
So do you inquire whether they would allow the use of the pole on, uh, the...
Well, that's a good question. You know, what we're doing here tonight is, this is governed by Chapter Forty-eight of the Vice Statutes of New Jersey, so those are the public utility statutes, and the way that this works is, is that essentially, we're here to obtain approval to place, to the extent we're able to, those facilities on existing poles that are in the right way. If a pole, an existing pole in the right way is not usable, then we have to suggest a replacement pole. We talk about putting something outside of the right way, that's a whole other kettle of fish. That's a, that's a full-blown land use application. What the SEC has said is that these are essentially utilities, like a utility pole, utility infrastructure, and it ought to be placed in the right way, and so that's why Verizon is, really must, have this place within the right way where there's power, water, and capacity. If we start, really, they really can't veer from that and start putting these onto private pieces of property, particularly the school property is, you may be aware that bidding's required, obviously, you know, land use approvals, formal land use approvals, you know, may be required, and that, that would, in the totality of that, that would be sort of problematic for the deployment of this type of infrastructure, which, as I said, the SEC uses being important.
So it's only, it's only for legal reasons that you can't use a piston pole?
Well, I'd say for, for the purposes of rolling out and providing the technology which consumers require, the SEC has said that Verizon, you know, needs to, under its license, provide, that's, that's the way to do it, and that's the way we have to do it, is put things in the right way.
Mr. Brogan, question, comment?
I guess, you know, back to my question a few times, it's the engineers here. The discussion, it was that it's going to be a 4G tower, right, two 4G towers, I guess. What, what is the, I know that, that Verizon is aggressively rolling out 5G, so is it, what is the, the delay for that, those towers?
Why 4G and not 5G?
Correct. Yeah, thank you for translating.
Well, Mr. Slack is a, is a, is a structural engineering, uh, art engineer, so with respect to that, and that's Verizon's internal plan at this point, obviously, the need is to provide additional capacity for the high school, which is right next door, so at this point, 4G is there, and in the future, you know, 5G is required, and that's a discussion to have with the council, the extent that we need to have with it, and so the pole.
Dr. Brady?
Yeah, just a silly question. What are the poles made of? Are they made of wood or are they made of metal?
That's next question, Mr. Slack.
They're wood.
They're what?
They're wood.
They're wood, yes. Big tall wood poles.
Yep.
They're really utility poles. One piece of wood.
Yes.
Council, question?
I think we discussed this last time, but two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars per year per pole is the max you can pay?
Correct. That's the, the SEC maximum. And that's, that's on top, you know, New Jersey is nothing, so the SEC, the maximum is two-hundred-and-seventy dollars per year, and Verizon wants on four.
It seems that it's an old rate. Real estate's worth a lot more today, right?
Well, actually, that was, that number was adopted in twenty eighteen.
We have a landfill that's pretty empty, a thousand poles up there.
That's spoken.
Just can't break the cap, that's all.
Mr. President.
No questions.
All my questions have been answered as well. Go ahead. Since the representatives are here, I will advance the resolution out of the dissent. Twenty-three, dash, zero-seven, zero-five, dash, two-two-two, authorizing the placement of utility poles, granting a right-of-way approval. The motion would be to approve the relocation of the Davenport Street pole as previously introduced. The motion, second?
Second.
All right, go on.
Council members, Rambo Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
No.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just for the record, you have a tabled resolution that will just die on the vine at the end of the year unless you decide you want to untable it and defeat that, but I would consider that, as I say, just let die on the vine.
Kevin, while we're talking about poles here, since we have a, evidently, an inactive pole on woodbed property, could we outreach to them to see if they will make petition to remove it if it's not needed?
Or is that on the school board?
It's, it's, it's right behind...
You're talking about the one on the school board, right?
Behind the fence.
Did you reach out to them?
Yes.
If it's not needed, I mean, maybe for future use, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I will tell you, the removal of poles is not, they're not inexpensive.
It's not cheap to do that.
But I'll be jolly.
Is it our burden, or...
No, no, it's utility cost. I was told that when the new poles were put up and restrong, the traffic lights go on them, the streetlights go on them, it could take three to five years before the old disused pole is removed. So that's, if they make the request now, maybe in five years it'll disappear. But if they have them, you know, a few years...
First, we have to decide who owns the pole, if it's on school property, that would be a problem.
Utility cost, you might have had an easement, I don't know. In a, in a, in a down moment, Kevin, it's not, not a priority, but if it's not needed, why have it?
The, the other discussion item was Council President Pitts asked Jason Kraskin to attend and give an update on the New Jersey American Water and the status.
Mr. Kraskin, just come up.
Hey. For what is happening? You all have water, man, that's, that's the update. Now, you know, to, to the mayor and Rambo, what you guys said, everything went great this weekend, could be expected. We didn't lose water on a thirty-six-inch main broke on two-oh-six on Thursday afternoon, right before the holiday weekend, horrible timing, but we were in contact with American Water, the Board of Health, you know, I'm sure you guys got a lot of complaints and calls about the restaurants having to close and everything else. It was a health issue, the Board of Health didn't issue a statement. I probably talked to Kevin Ford twice in the last seven days and in the last year and a half because of all of this, so I do want to echo your guys' comments, thanking the Fire Department, Kevin, the borough owner, the Police Department, the Board of Health, the County OEM, the hospital. There was a, a litany of every day, there was at least two phone calls with forty to fifty people on each call from the different town, all the different OEMs, police chiefs, fire departments. We got very lucky in Somerville that we had most of the town where we stored water within twenty-four to thirty-six hours. Some low pressure and a few individual properties. Raritan, right next door, didn't get water back until Monday, late Monday, for most of the municipality. So we, we got lucky, it's kind of the way the pipe broke and where they were able to divert water. The residents did do a great job, we got out on social media, people did, they saw a drop in water usage, so people did listen, stopped using their sprinkler systems, filling pools, all of those things to allow everybody else to have more pressure when it was needed. Again, everything went probably about as smoothly as we could have asked, granted that it was a holiday weekend and everybody else wanted it for a question of it. Barbecues were disrupted, restaurants had some issues, but again, they, they weren't prepared what it could have been, so.
The hospital had low pressure, but considering where it has to go, the hospital happens to be the same.
Exactly, and the hospital has a very, very large water reserve, and they have pumps that actually boost up the pressure for them, but we did actually keep a fire truck on-site until six a.m., even after the water got restored at about, with pressure, at about eight o'clock at night, they kept the fire truck there until six a.m. just to make sure, you know, their suppression systems, God forbid something happened, had enough water pressure to, to take care of it. So about six a.m., we released the Fire Department, these are confident it was working well. So no evacuations, nothing needed like that, so we got lucky.
Jason, if we were Raritan and didn't have the water until Monday, are we prepared for that?
So we are, so American Water didn't, didn't do a great job. They came out, and we didn't really hear about them much here because we didn't push it out. They put water distribution sites in the town, so they were giving water to anybody who didn't have it, and they would be doing the same thing in Somerville, we would have pushed it out. What they didn't want was us telling all of Somerville that, hey, there's water being given out in Raritan, because they didn't want every resident from Somerville just going and grabbing ten, three cases of water at a great hour. But we were, we were prepared, and there was provisions made of where we'd be able to do these, how we'd get water to residents who couldn't, so we were, we were prepared in case of it, as, when it hit. We all didn't think we were going to have water, so we did prep for that. Luckily, we, we didn't need it. Over at Raritan and parts of Bridge Water did. And American Water did come out, they provided all the water that everybody needed. It was an effort, there was a lot of volunteers needed, and a lot of trucked-in water and stuff, but it went well.
The DSA was able to push out a lot of messages to our departments as well, and Somerset County OEM. So what, what, what New Jersey American Water did right away was, the, they basically were held holding meetings with us almost every four hours throughout the day to give us an update. Things moved pretty quickly. I, I was at the site on Friday night, and from that point, it seemed like, okay, not much is moving, but from that point on, things really moved pretty quickly. And Somerset County OEM, they did a nice job of coordinating with the municipalities, Hillsborough, Raritan, and Bridge Water, and Somerville, and one of the goals was not to have every town have different messaging and different pushouts, so what we did is, is American Water, they, through most of the, the messaging, what we did is kind of amplify their messaging, so they, they talked to us about their press releases, and then they issued them, and then we all pushed, pushed theirs out as well. So it wasn't, you know, there was no need to have, you know, people involved just to get information because we were all getting the same information, so I, I thought it was a fantastic effort and...
Very coordinated.
You know, we do owe Jason an entire holiday weekend back, you know, we'll get that back.
It was all we managed to handle.
But it really was, and the county did a great job, the County OEM, you know, they reached out to all the different fire departments in the area, because the big concern we had was the fire had, it's had no pressure for a period of time. There was a fire, and this goes back to the Board of Health shutting down restaurants, aside from washing down, you know, washing your hands, boiling water, et cetera, if there was an issue, sprinkler systems weren't going to work. So every town was put on notice, you know, fill up your tankers, have everything ready, the county filled up, had all their people on standby, so God forbid it didn't happen. There was a fire, but they needed municipalities, everybody else would be coming in with that actual order to handle it, so. It, it was a coordinated effort that luckily most people didn't have to see, and nothing ever, ever came of, but there, there was a lot of hands involved there.
Jason, question, any, any particular consideration for the senior citizen building?
So they, they also, when we did speak, then they, same thing when it first happened, lost water, but they, they did pressurize back there, they were, they were on the early end of getting water pressure back, so they, they did get it back, and if they didn't, we would have been in the same situation we did with Alstoville, we would have put a fire truck there to, you know, fill up their suppression systems, because that was, that was the major issue, is God forbid, there's a fire, there was no water to put it out. So the drinking water, we would have brought in water to them, because obviously, they wouldn't have been able to get to a site, so that wasn't the discussion, senior centers got it, but we did get lucky, so they didn't actually ever need additional.
If this had been a longer term, would a shelter have been advisable for those folks?
It was, it was discussed over here, we probably would have had them move out of there to a shelter, because if they didn't have water, the whole town didn't have water. Even bringing the high school, where we have shelters, we would have had to move them up to Warren or another municipality, and it would have been easier to bring the fire truck on-site, backfill their system if needed for the case of a fire, and just keep bringing them cases of water, you know, to, to sustain them for this small period.
It's good to know that we have, you know, extra contingencies for, for that side as well as that.
Every C cap called you about water.
Exactly.
Last question, Jason. Do you know if the water company is going to have a debriefing at the end when this is all done to just see how things went?
I'm sure they will, I mean, like, as Kevin said, there was, there was calls every four hours, so we did speak even after they got water up. They did, I mean, to, to the fact that they went around, unbeknownst to most people, they went around, they were testing water throughout the borough, we had to call the police chief, who was commended, have police escorts as needed to get into different businesses, residents as needed to take a test warning throughout town, just to verify that even though they were reading clean, they wanted to know all municipalities, and the residents were, et cetera. So I'm sure there will be another follow-up at the very end, as the road gets paved and everything's cleaned up. I think American Water, the guys need a little bit of sleep.
Yeah.
They, they were up twenty-four seven for that.
We're supposed to have a meeting with them, they related to something else, and they were back on.
Kevin?
There is a debriefing that they're scheduling with the mayor, the OEM coordinator. They, they haven't nailed down a date, because they're talking about Tuesday next week, but again, that'll need to be you guys. There was also just one mention was the YMCA, who also stepped up, that offered folks to take showers and use their facilities outside of the areas that, that, you know, other and use their facilities outside of the areas that, you know, other facilities that actually have.
Just make sure we have posted on our site that the water is being inspected by, not only the water company, but the side of water help.
Let me know on that Tuesday meeting, I'll give you the order.
The people have a comfort level that the water quality is being monitored.
We're gonna, they're gonna take over our sewer system soon. I have to believe that we need to develop some kind of procedures that would anticipate a problem there, other than we have Ed North to go down to the hall and take a look with a flashlight, okay? I think it was good that they are so diligent in what they do, and I think it really bodes well for them taking care of our sewer system. But I'd like to see a coordinated effort there to see, you know, how do they handle that? It's a different flow, but water is artery, sewers are veins, okay?
It's opposite flow there. And I'm sure that, especially with the county, we do our quarterly drills with the county OEM, and, you know, every quarter we come up with a different scenario. Something tells us that this is gonna be on the next one, and sewers will probably be interjected with that as well. So I'll keep you posted on that. I'm almost gonna guarantee that we'll be on the next drills that we go with the county.
As far as the water quality, the DEP was on our calls. So the quality, you know, the quality was actually tested through the DEP.
Yeah, the DEP came out on Monday afternoon and evening. I think they were in Somerville about 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock at night one day, testing around the different areas of the borough, between hydrants, and then just going into that. I don't know the properties off the top of my head. I know Luke Oil was one of them. I think there was a couple of properties that they went to that they asked for police assistance, just to make sure everything was safe, but the DEP didn't really test everything. And it was all kind of.
Kevin, if the water company has a hotline for questions about water quality, I think that's on our website too. So people can call, just to be sure that it's coming out of their tab, it's usable. Jason, again.
I want to also echo the YMCA, that was a failed dimension, thank you, Kevin. They did reach out, and because they have other sites, they opened up all of their sites. All of our residents free of charge for anything that was needed. So again, there was those small connections, there was a lot of them, and I forgot about them. Thank you.
Again, Jason, from the table, just thank you for just caring about us all.
It went as well as could have, you know, in this situation, so. Thank you.
Well, we have two ordinances for introduction, hold it. 2712, 230705. The ordinance providing funding for the improvements to Lot 6, the property in the borough, Somerville, appropriated $175,000 for such purpose. And just for the public, Lot 6, Kevin, is?
Lot 6 is the one that's located off of North Bridge Street. It's the entrance to North Bridge Street, sits in between Tapestry.
Tapestry, wow.
And it kind of sits behind Village, of course, the name.
The old Ward parking lot.
Yeah, it's right there. And it does have, it does have access, we actually own that alleyway. And we are, we do have, we did meet with the owners of Tapestry, as well as three other owners. That's Dan, Mr. Chelli is the other. Two of them already have agreed to pay their portion as part of this deal and reimburse, you know, they have a small section, so that it's just, there's not, so there's no cut. So two of them have already allowed us on their property, and they'll pay for their portion. I'm talking, you know, it's a small amount, but we're just waiting for the third one to come out.
So this is only repaving? There's no other work being done?
It's milling and paving, so it's gonna be mill and paving, and there's no curving. Afterwards, there'll be striping for the parking lot.
And they'll do the driveway from North Bridge into the lot?
Yes, it'll be.
Which is a little on the rocky.
You can only, you'll only be able to go in.
Is there an exit out to Maple?
That's right. And you have, we have that script.
Okay, good.
And this has all been budgeted?
Yes.
That's what you need to do.
Motion for introduction. How long, hang on, motion for introduction. So move, second. All right. Go ahead, see, and ask how long the lot, which ones took the work?
It's not up to bid yet. I'm gonna say million paving, if that'll take a day each day. Maybe the lots close three days, four days.
To be determined. Okay, roll call.
Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell. Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. 2713, 230705. Arranging a fourth amendment to the built-to-lease-for-property notice tax, block 73, lot 16.02, locating in the gas and habity redevelopment area with MTS Somerville, NJ LLC, contract to redevelop pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJ SA 48, colon, 12A, dash, 1SSEC, for the emergency services facility project. Motion for introduction. So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. The way the calendar falls, Kevin, I believe these two will be available for the public hearing and discussion for adoption on August 7th.
Correct.
Good. All right, we have two ordinances for public hearing and adoption, we'll take them separately. 2710, dash, 23, dash, 06, 05. Amending chapter 102, 104 of the Borough Code to permit two family residences in the professional office residential POR zone. Motion for public comment.
So move, second. Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. Hold it. Comment. Hearing none. Motion to close. So move.
Second. Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell. Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. Motion for adoption. So move, second. Roll call.
Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell. Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. Right, our second ordinance, 2711, 230619. Eliminating chapter 45 alcohol beverages, article 2, consumption in public, section 24B. Motion for public comment. So move, second.
So that ordinance, may I?
Hang on. Yep. Oh.
Really be section 24A and B.
I'm sorry.
A and B.
I will amend that when we get to these options.
Correct.
A motion for public comment was moved.
I'm sorry. Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell. Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Public comment of this ordinance. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Brian Gallagher, Seventh Maryland Avenue. Actually, really just an explanation, because it, there's a little bit of confusion. It looks like you're just eliminated completely and allowing everybody to drink wherever they want.
That was my first reaction.
So if you would just explain that to folks, so there's no overreaction, because I'm sure you receive some calls and I receive some.
I'd probably get a lot of good calls if that was the case.
Yeah, but similar phrases.
So.
We all got the same call, Brian.
From the same person?
So it is a little confusing, there's no doubt about it. I've read it myself, going over it, and we may need to tweak it a little, just so it makes a little more sense. Basically, public, drinking in the public park is not allowed now, right? So that's the easy part of the ordinance, we're taking it off. Apparently, this is left in old ordinance, that you can drink in a public park if you guys said it was okay. It's really not the case. Obviously, we have other regulations and rules that prevent that from happening. As far as the sidewalk cafe, the Borough Council already doubted it on a sidewalk cafe that basically says that you can have a cafe and you can offer, you can offer alcohol in that cafe. And there's a fee to have that sidewalk cafe. For those with the alcohol side, it's $100, for without alcohol, I believe it's $60. So the problem is, this ordinance is really duplicating a little of that. The confusion was, I believe, some people were concerned that there was another $100 fee. There, now, there's not another $100 fee. The $100 fee that's mentioned is the one we're actually eliminating. So I may come back to you with some clarity on this, but what it is, is we were notified by someone requesting to have initially a beer party in the park. And this is what prompted the discussion. It did go away, but it's come back again when we did the sidewalk cafe, saying, wait, we have another ordinance on the books that says this. So this would eliminate those two sections, which would leave the ordinance in kind of a skeletal mess. That's what I mean, I have to probably come back to you with the change. So if it's of the opinion to the council, just not to take action. And for me to do that, I can do that as well. If it's to take action so that we don't have other people requesting alcohol in parks, you can take action today and I can clean it up as we go, so.
We can discuss that once the public's answered.
So the ordinance doesn't authorize drinking in public?
No, the ordinance is, the ordinance is supposed to, is supposed to be housekeeping. That's more than anything.
It cleans up some contradictions, confusions in the ordinance, but unlike what it sounds like in the title, it doesn't authorize drinking in public.
So we have 45 days to have that beer party in the park, is that right?
So the title of it is eliminating consumption in public, right? It's eliminating, so the ordinance, the current ordinance does say consumption in public. So that's.
Let's see if there's more public comment. All right, motion to close, roll.
So move, second. Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. All right, I'll entertain at first a motion to adopt.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
I move to adopt this amendment.
No, I couldn't. All right, so we can discuss that if you have questions, and if the.
Would it be better just, are we discussing?
Yes.
Would it be better just to clean it all up at once?
Are you asking me? Not urgent, but at the way it's presently written, somebody could come along and make an application to have a drunk party in the park.
Well, now that we announced it publicly.
There is, I mean, there was a couple business.
Don't get any ideas, you.
There was some business owners that raised concern on them. I spoke to all of them individually and explained it to them. They're comfortable, but, you know, it took an effort to make that happen. And, you know, again, that's why I offered to you, I could certainly go back, stare at this thing, and come up with.
My only thing is, a lot of things we did, they don't get put off and put off and put off, and it's not a priority, so then we never get it done, whereas if we pass it, it's gonna be incomplete, and that's my fault.
Well, this doesn't impact our downtown, because downtown already has.
Well, you already have ordinances that govern this. This one conflicts some of those.
Right. My only comment or criticism was, when it said eliminating, I guess my brain didn't see eliminating. And I read it, and I saw the dollars, I'm saying. And then I got a call from one of the owners, and said, what's going on? And I asked Kevin, he said, well, we're eliminating it. So I really didn't call it back. I figured, we'll straighten it out later. But I guess the reason I'm concerned is, we have, what, $65 if you have a sidewalk cafe, and $100 if you serve liquor.
It's $60. That's already on the laws.
That's a different.
I guess the question I have is, suppose I have a sidewalk cafe, and people bring their own BYOB.
So.
I mean, we're not regulating the.
Yeah, so BYOB is not regulated by the council, regulated by other laws. But are you asking which category or clause?
I'm almost saying, why do we have, why do we have a difference? I mean, we're not, it's not thousands of dollars. I mean, I'd like to see one fee per sidewalk cafe, whether you drink or not.
Okay, well, that's, we can add that to the list of things that need to take place in the future.
Honestly, it doesn't require any more labor to do one or the other. I mean.
The fee is not part of this ordinance.
No, you're right, but I'm just going through and through the whole idea. We have $100 and $60, take one fee for each alone, that's a lot of money. You know, it doesn't require, it's not all our money, one way or the other. And then if somebody does get a liquor license and wants to have, I don't know, I mean, the liquor license essentially gives them the right to serve liquor. The sidewalk is not part of their business, yet we have extended their business to the sidewalk.
Well, we have, we have a motion and a second. We have the option for our motion to table.
I just, let's, hold it at the end of the.
Motion to table is my thing.
Would you like to make that motion?
Um, well, I mean.
It can supersede these.
Motion to table would take precedence.
We'll see where we want to go.
Yeah, I think we need to rewrite the whole thing. If you bring up more points, if we just do this, it's just piecemeal and I can do the whole thing at once.
I will return for your statement as a motion to table. Do we have a second on that motion? All right, generally, that motion dies for lack of a second.
That's correct.
Gives us back to the original motion.
Roll to adopt.
To adopt. Roll call.
Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yeah.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. Kevin, that doesn't preclude you from, you know, bringing this back in a better form. Okay, in a different way. All right. We are now at open public meeting, motion.
Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Public session? Name and address for the record. I'll call up our resident Brooklyn Dodger fan.
Yeah, too young, you remember the Brooklyn Dodgers?
No, no, I saw the Brooklyn Dodgers play, I saw them play against the New York Giants.
Yeah, it's field.
No, my grandfather took me to the Polo Grounds, he's never gone to Brooklyn, too, that's field.
Art of here, 81 Center Street. I'd like to thank the council members who came to the cemetery on Memorial Day for the service. Dr. Brady, excellent job. Mayor, I'm gonna have my cousin Lisa get in touch with you about our great-grandfather, John Klein, who was USCT from Somerville. She's got a lot of information, so next year you can do your thing on USCT. I'm gonna have my other cousin get together with you on our relative who from Somerville, who was a captain during the Revolutionary War.
We have Veterans Day coming up too, sir. She can get to me, you know, in the next month or two, and I'd be glad to honor your ass and, you know, with those remarks.
I'd like to thank Kevin for everything that he did to get us ready at the cemetery. And to the pair of Rodneys, Hadley and Rodney Dorsey. Timmy Burns, who fires off the gun, who does the gun salute, said this was the first time he's ever been able to hear the whole program, because we've got a new sound system. So thank you all, we really appreciate it. Secondly, I'd like to thank you, the last time I was here, we talked about the illuminated stop sign on the intersection of Center and Third. Two days later, it was in. I really appreciate that.
What's the feedback on it so far?
Well, it's like every other sign. They're not enforced, they're suggestions. We suggest that you stop at this intersection. We suggest you don't do more than 65 on 287. We suggest that you yield. That's the American way. We have that NASCAR mentality. If my car can't do 180 miles an hour, I need to dump it. If it only gets three miles a gallon, that's a good American car. So these are only suggestions. I've stood on the corner of Grove Street in Dunell in one time, and for about two hours, my brother lived there, and average eight cars either rolled through the stop sign or just blow through the stop sign. Eight out of every 10. So some people like it, others, well, get used to it.
It's just to make sure that patrol is aware of the new sign, because it is a highly trafficked area for kids.
Oh, yeah.
Especially with summer going on right now.
We have a lot of kids, we don't have any to spare. And like most residents of most neighborhoods, the majority of the seniors live in the neighborhood.
the majority of the speakers live in the neighborhood, so we have a big problem with that. Okay, we're gonna talk about, probably, Colin and I already talked about that. What's the status of the grant for South Side Park?
Just had a discussion with Kevin the other day, so Kevin, you wanna just fill a lot?
It's a lengthy process, we did hire a company, management strategies to assist us with the federal side, in hopes that they can help us navigate some of the regulations and stuff that we just don't have the skill set to do. They did explain that it's a lengthy process, so, we actually just sent additional forms back into the federal government. The next step is, they have to determine whether the environmental work that we've conducted would be applicable to the environmental requirements of the grant, if that's where we're at. So, we did some previous work, so we stepped away. Without exaggeration, it will take years, unfortunately. We do have another federal grant, that's Veterans Memorial Drive, that did start in 2015, I believe. I think that's the Veterans Memorial Drive grant. Unfortunately, the federal grants, while it's great to get the free dollars per se, the process is lengthy. And it's not, it's not something that the municipality can really expedite. It's their review process, and, and, you know, what we're learning certainly from the Veterans Memorial Grant, you know, they have a lot of control until the project gets underway. Unfortunately, they also control timelines. But we, the mayor, they just did with me last week on this, saying, what's going on with this? So, I am on top of it with the, our new consultants on the project.
And I know there's been some training that our staff has done already, so it's, it's just not easy to bring bulldozers in and bring dirt. It's, but it will be done, but it's, we have to, it's their dollars, and we have to play by their rules.
The problem that we've noticed on the Veterans Memorial Grants is that, you know, the amount of money in a couple of years is not equivalent to the amount of money exactly, right? So, in the Veterans Memorial, we're actually now seeking additional funding, because the way that, you know, costs it. I'll certainly give you a praise as we go along with that.
Appreciate that. I was glad that we passed the ordinance on the POR zone, something we can work another two years.
That'll clear your plate a little bit.
Yeah, well, I'm loading it up with you, we've got a couple of things. We're gonna have a joint meeting with the planning board, because Bernie has, Bernie wants us to review the F A R requirements. And I want, we're gonna start looking at the zoning on Second Street, so we're gonna just take, let's say, a memorializing, I'll let me make a presentation to the planning board on it next week. And then, thank you for putting Steve Daniels on the zoning board, he's gonna be good.
Thank you for the recommendation.
Thank you.
There is no further public comment, motion to close, and we'll.
Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
All right, we have our consent resolution, so any for individual discussion. Then, I'll summarize these, 220, authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract GeoSynTech. 221, authorizing an invisible lien on 66 Somerset Street for property maintenance performed by the T W. 223, approving a new taxi driver license for Prestino Cordero. 224, authorizing the purchase of two 2023 Dodge Durangos for our police department. 225, authorizing execution of a shared service agreement to the Borough of Summerville and Somerset County Department of Public Works for street sweeping collection facility. 226, approving chapter 159 from the National Opioid Settlement FD Trust. 227, supporting Assembly Bill 4008 upgrading assault charges on crossing guards. Parking attendants and uniformed employees of a parking authority who aggravated assault. 228, approving the appointment of an intern for the summer from TC and J. 229, approving the appointment of a deputy registrar, position to end, I believe, September.
That's this temporary.
That temporary position. Motion?
So, second. Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Right, bills of vouchers, Dr. Brady.
Oh, dear, yes, indeed, an interesting Fourth of July, I was at Borough Hall, I did hear someone come in and leave, and it was not a ghost. I don't think that, but I managed to encumber the borough in the amount of $1,302,612.60, and that is my motion to approve.
Correct.
Council members, Graham Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Brum.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Okay, before I ask for adjournment, just a public service request, as I mentioned before, we've got a lot of road construction going on right now. And schools out, people on vacation, parents, just remind your kids to be a little extra cautious. You know, heavy equipment is an attraction, especially for young boys. I'm sure all of us remember, you know, at least once upon a time crawling on a tractor, or on a backhoe, or something like that. It's a combination of a lot of good work being done, but a lot of, a lot of kids with leisure time. So, parents, if you just remind your kids to be a little extra vigilant, and if there are any kids watching up there, you know, it falls on you guys as well. Parents can't watch every minute of the day. I want you to enjoy our streets, enjoy riding your bike, enjoy walking to your friend's houses, walking to the pools, walking to the playgrounds. Just, just everyone be a little extra careful, and anyone who's driving in town, again, it's needed work, you just have to have an extra couple pair of eyes, so that, you know, we all can get through the summer safely. And with that, I'll ask for an adjournment, Mr. Mitchell.
We're adjourned.
Second.
One favor.
Aye.
Close.